Okay. Good evening and welcome to the December ninth, two thousand thirteen regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will read the school district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. And now, the first item we have on our agenda, Dr. Norris is just preparing the podium, is a board celebration because we have a very special guest here tonight, a school district longtime staff member who's receiving a very well-deserved honor. And that's Mr. Steve Gillan, who's here, who has been employed with the district for thirty-six years. He's been involved for a long time. And actually, when I was a freshman at West High on the wrestling team, Mr. Gillan was one of the coaches along with Donoff, a great guy. I was thrilled when I saw this news, that Mr. Gillan has been named the twenty-fourteen Iowa Middle School Athletic Director of the Year by the Iowa High School Athletic Directors Association. So, Dr. Norris is here to introduce Mr. Gillan, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Norris.
Well, Steve first started coaching for us in nineteen seventy-seven, and then we needed a special needs teacher at West High, and in nineteen eighty-six, he was, took on that assignment. And he became administrative assistant and dean in nineteen ninety-nine, and served as assistant principal athletic director at Bunger Middle School for four years, and held the same position for eight years at Hoover. Mr. Gillan is the go-to guy in our school district when anyone has any questions about athletics. And he is well-known for around the state of his quiet diplomacy and his ability to get things done. Anyone ever attending an athletic event at Hoover knew Steve would start athletic contests on time and stay there till the end. So, we are so proud of Steve. And I know Steve, this year, went over to East High to help us work on some situations at East High, and we're glad he did that. But I'm very glad that his peers nominated him, and then eventually he was awarded the Middle School Athletic Director of the Year. So, Steve, we're proud of you. You want to introduce your wife, too? Have her stand.
I'd like to introduce my wife, Jane. This is a very big surprise for me. I wasn't expecting it. But I need to thank a lot of people. I mean, it was all the great administrators, and coaches, and athletes, and parents that I got to work with during those years that made this possible. So, they deserve a lot of this, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I also might add that Steve has been very instrumental on our district athletic committee that's going on now. And for those of you, Mike, and Shanley, and Sue, that have been able to attend those meetings, Steve is playing a big role there. He has a lot of history about our district and about sports in general in the school district. So, Steve, we're proud of you. And Jane, I guess you've got to put up with him for a while.
Again, congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Gillan. And we're thrilled. We're very, very thankful to you for your years of service to Waterloo, and so glad you got recognized by your peers from around the state. So, again, congratulations. The next item on the agenda is another information item, and this is regarding the Battle of Waterloo Wrestling Tournament, which will be held in about a week and a half. And Crystal Buzza is here to give us some background information on this year's tournament. It's been a very successful tournament that was started a few years ago. And it's been a great thing, I think, for the school district and our community, and the tourism industry, I think, as well. But I'll turn it now over to Crystal Buzza.
That's correct. Thank you very much. The Battle of Waterloo Tournament is coming up this December. It's the twentieth through the twenty-first. And I should also first mention Todd Coulter apologizes he could not come tonight. He had an emergency that came up in his family, so he's taking care of that. But as we mentioned, Mr. Gillan is involved in a lot of different things, and the Battle of Waterloo is one committee that he does sit on and helps us a lot with that. Obviously, wrestling being a big part of his life helps with that. But the tournament is our fourth year that we've had the tournament. It's a two-day tournament. We hold it at Young Arena in downtown Waterloo. And we invite thirty-two teams from across the state of Iowa. And it's very unique in that we don't just invite teams of one class, so like three A or two A. It's a multi-class tournament where some of the best of the best can wrestle against each other. And each team, there's two different sessions on Friday and on Saturday, and they start at nine a.m., and then it kind of goes all the way through the evening until nine o'clock at night. Each team gets a chance to wrestle three different rounds. And for us, for the Waterloo Schools, it's a really big benefit because, one, it brings a lot of recognition to Waterloo. We are known for wrestling here in Waterloo. But also, this is a great way for our athletics department to build a little additional funding. And so, we'd really like to invite people to come down to the tournament. It is a great tourism thing. It helps bring people into Waterloo in a time when, you know, there's really not a lot of different things going on, as some of the teams are further away, so they will be staying overnight. Their families will be staying overnight as well. We have a lot of great sponsorships this year. One of the big sponsors that we've had that jumped on board was Shields. Ramada's been a good sponsor, where they donate hotel rooms for our officials. We get sponsorships through Advanced Systems. Let's see, I'm probably missing some. A big part of our sponsor is Waterloo Sports Commission, or the, sorry, the Cedar Valley Sports and Entertainment Commission. And then the Waterloo Hotel Motel Tax also pays a big chunk of us to be able to put this tournament on. And so, the staff and everybody in the entire committee, I mean, the athletic directors at the different high schools help out. It's just a really great event. One thing new this year that we are doing is we're going to have a Hall of Fame reception. Each year, we induct members into this Hall of Fame. And so, this year, our Hall of Fame inductees will be, from West High School is Tom Huff and Matt Dickey. From East High School will be Mike Allen and Willie Gadsden will be inducted. And then from Columbus is J.J. Kretzinger and Dennis Getz.
I think maybe Mr. Gillan wanted to say something. Did you, Steve?
Sure. Come on. Yes, Hy-Vee also. Yes, they are donating a lot of our catering, yes. And for the Hall of Fame reception, they are paying for all of that. So, that allows us to do that Thursday night. So, yeah.
Well, Crystal, thank you. I know, I know it's an awful lot of work into the committee. And I think Aaron is very involved as well from the Chamber of Commerce, but there are a number of people that have worked very, very hard on this, and it really is a great thing. The attendance has been fantastic.
Yes, we've had really good attendance. We anticipate to have at least four thousand people over the two-day period that will come to Young Arena. So, we hope to break that. But that's what we know for sure. We should expect at least that.
Have you filled the field?
Yeah, the teams actually are locked in for a two-year contract.
Okay.
And so, actually, after this year, since it's our fourth year, we'll be re-looking at some of the teams. And every year since it started, there's been a waiting list. So, there's a number of teams that know that it's opening up for next year. And all the coaches, anybody who's involved, that's a coach or athletic director, gets calls constantly of, can we get in? Do you think this will be possible? I changed my schedule around, so I know it will work this weekend. So...
Do you want to introduce Ally?
Oh, she, actually, she's going to be with the other donation.
Okay, great.
Great. Any other questions? Not Crystal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that. And now, we've come to the time to hear from individuals that would like to address the board. And if there's anybody here, I'll read a card. But before I read the card, I just want to make sure that there are people that would like to come up and speak. So, you're more than welcome to. Now's the time to do it. But if you could just raise your hand if you want to speak. Okay. And seeing none, then I'll move on to the next. I won't read the card, then. I'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a consent agenda. And tonight, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of our last regular school board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last school board meeting, bills due and payable since our last board meeting. And then we've got a donation of coats, gloves, hats, and scarves from a number of different organizations. We also have on the agenda the asbestos removal contract for the old Irving Elementary Building, which is part of the process in demolishing that building. We have a bid of around fifty-three thousand dollars for an extension of the driveway at Orange Elementary School, near the rear of the school, really the bus turnaround area. And then finally, an action plan for the annual transportation report to the State of Iowa Department of Education. Are there any items in the consent agenda that the board members wish to be removed?
We'll go back to the old norm tonight. FGHNI, please.
And that is, that is the donation of hats and gloves, the Irving, old Irving asbestos removal, the Orange Elementary Project. And then finally, the action plan for the annual transportation report. Are there any other items that board members wish to be removed? Fortunately, that's it. So, we still have three, I guess, that are on the agenda. Then it asks for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item C, I'm sorry, with the exceptions of item FGHNI.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second. Okay, any discussion? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. Then that takes us to Exhibit F on page eighteen.
I move the Board of Education accept the donations of coats, gloves, hats, and scarves valued over twenty-seven thousand dollars from the Waterloo Downtown Rotary, Waterloo Board of Realtors, Young Professionals, Waterloo Easy Riders Kiwanis Club, Julie Eilers, and Ben Bullerman.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And a discussion, and I think we have some people that are here in the audience, too, as they're coming up.
Yeah, this is just a remarkable number. And I guess I either missed it, or I don't remember it being of that magnitude in the past. So, what has changed?
Yep. So, first, I am just so pleased on how well the community has just contacted us and constantly, probably since November, my phone, it feels like it's been going off the hook with, hey, we have some stuff we want to donate. Could you use them? And absolutely. And it's come at a perfect time, right, when it's getting very cold. For the Downtown Rotary, that really started with Steve and Liz Thorpe. And I probably remember that. I think this is the third year that they have done that. And so, every year, they've worked really hard to grow that. This year, they were able to raise nineteen thousand, which is the most they've ever raised. And so, they have just a little bit over a thousand new winter coats that will go, a lot of them went to the Waterloo Schools. Some of them did go to the Catholic Schools as well. And so, actually, it worked out really well this year that they drop shipped them all to us. And so, they were being stored over at central stores. And so, we quickly distributed them out to the different schools. But they bring in volunteers and help make sure they fit the kids. They start, actually, in October, measuring the children to make sure they have the exact coat for the children. And then, Ally, who's here with the Young Realtors Professional Group, last year, they donated a bunch of hats and mittens. And this year, they just had an overwhelming success. So, I'll have you talk about kind of the project that you did.
All right. Well, this year was their second annual hat and mittens drive, and we plan to continue it every year and hope that it grows every year. We had a lot more involvement within all the offices this year. We had a lot more of the, many more of the mortgage lenders and attorneys in the area donated. We actually had some outsiders. We got a grant from Covenant, which was really nice for it. And they said, next year, they want to know about it, and they want to give us so much more. This year was really last minute when we contacted them. So, it was really fun. We had fun with this event. A lot of the ladies knit the hats and scarves. And it's fun to go out there shopping for it. And I feel like it's a need in our community with how cold it gets.
I just want to mention Julie, who is also our primetime coordinator. Last year, after Steve and Liz went through and helped find a bunch of coats for kids, they still realized that there was a number of kids who needed coats. And Julie, if you are familiar with her at all, she operates the Iowa's Bravest Project, which sends packages overseas to our military men and women who keep us safe throughout the year. And so, she just really felt that this was a project that she wanted to take on and her own personal time. And so, she wrote a number of her friends, wrote some letters to the editors. And so, she has, actually, as of today, she emailed me and said she's closer to nine thousand dollars that she's raised. And she's continuing to go out and get some different coats. And she's trying to get some out to the middle schools, too, which is kind of a big need in middle school and high school as well. And the one thing that Julie always remembers is that Liz Thorpe will always tell you that, people always say, why didn't you just give them a gently-used coat? Well, if you give a child a brand-new coat, in society, they see that as they're being valued and that they are appreciated in society, which is why a new coat is so important. So, Julie really helped to expand that. And then the Kiwanis Club, they've always been great about donating hats and mittens every year since I've been at the district, and even when Michelle was here as well. And then Ben Bullerman, who's the West High student who helped with the dress code clothing project, also wanted to do some hats and then some headbands as well. So, yeah. Thank you.
Great. Well, our thanks, our deep thanks go to all five, to Steve and Liz Thorpe and the Rotary Club, to the Kiwanis Club, to Ben Bullerman. I love, it was really neat to see that there's a student who's organizing this, donated a number of headbands and hats to the Kiwanis Club as well. But Ally, especially, please pass our thanks on. It's the Young Professionals Network, which is a part of the Blackhawk County Board of Realtors.
Yeah, it is the Young Professional Network that's a part of the Board of Realtors and the National Association of Realtors as a whole. So, this is something that we did locally, though.
Oh, thank you. It's very much appreciated. And please pass along our thanks to your group as well. And then to Julie, that's amazing. She does so many great things through her position. But it's very much appreciated, and especially with the weather we're having right now. But I think with the coats, just to go on, I believe, at least, I know with the Rotary Club, all the coats are, they come in different colors and different shapes and sizes.
I think they have about twenty different styles. They order them through a project called Operation Warm, which actually started with a Rotary group, I think, in Pennsylvania, I want to say. And so, that was just a project that Steve really liked when he went to a national Rotary conference.
Yeah. No, it's a great thing. And I know the kids love their coats. It's really neat to see when they're handing them out.
I just wanted to add, I just had a kid who comes to my youth group, but he's not even old enough to be in it. So, we let him come anyway. And I do youth group at the Salvation Army, and he came in with a brand-new coat. And I just recognized it because it looked like an Operation Warm coat to me. And I was like, who got that nice new coat? And he was so proud, and you should see on his face, that he was so excited to have a bright green coat that was his own. And so, it was just, it's just amazing to see how it touches the kids.
Exactly. Yeah. No, thank you. Please express our gratitude to everybody involved in this. Crystal, thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to, then Exhibit G. It's on page nineteen.
Did we vote on that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on it. Excuse me, I'm moving ahead. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. I'm on motion, Carrie. Thanks again. Now, now it's Exhibit G.
I move the Board of Education accept the recommendation of Haskell Limited and approve the low bid of, low bid for the old Irving asbestos removal with advanced environmental in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, and I don't know if there's anybody here that can answer these. I have two questions on this one, really. Is there any, you know, explanation for the wide range of bids? I know asbestos removal is kind of a subjective thing, and the bids are normally, they seem maybe a little more than normal.
I can, you know, we can also check in facilities Wednesday morning and see what...
And the other one is the role of Haskell in terms of evaluating the bids. I'm not sure what, if we just bring the contractors in and say, here it is, look at it, you determine, you know, whether flashing, or ceiling tile, or floor tile, or whatever needs to be, or whether we try to specify. So, just a little clarity, and we can...
We'll absolutely get that for you.
And then I was just wondering on that, too, the timeline, kind of, if we could get that announced, and maybe at least around to the residents there, you know, what kind of our goals are as far as getting the asbestos out, and then next steps, next phases, and when our final completion is to graze it would be awesome.
Well, we don't have a, we don't have an exact date yet, but they'll work when and wherever they can in the winter, obviously. But it's not a heated building, obviously. But, and then as soon as, hopefully, as soon as the wet season ends, we'll be able to start going immediately. And Lyle, you forgot to include the fact that you volunteered to crawl up through pipelines and chases, because we had a, we had a real weird one about two or three years ago at the old Lincoln, where they had it all out, and then the guy taking the building down found one darn asbestos pipe, which meant then the whole site was contaminated. Just one.
It was between a double wall, so it wasn't...
It wasn't visible.
Visible.
So, Lyle volunteered to crawl up there.
Demolition, so. Yeah, right. But particularly, I think that the timeliness then of the ultimate demolition, because I don't know if the window glazing has asbestos or not, but if it does, you end up with a building without windows after the asbestos is removed. And so, or we may. I'm not sure.
But we've already appropriated the money for the project, and so, we're going to be ready to roll with the demolition bids, too.
And just keeping the neighbors apprised.
Absolutely. Good idea, Sue.
But this is just, this is part of the process. Then we'll have a bid for the demolition after this. Okay.
It may be less, actually, than the asbestos, which is very...
Yeah, I know that's happened before.
Yeah.
Anything further? If not, then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us on then to Exhibit H on page twenty-two.
I move the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the facility committee and approve the quote from DC Construction of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seven dollars for the driveway work at Orange Elementary as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Great. And discussion?
And I don't know, I wasn't out there today. Are they, it's kind of passed?
Lyle, Marty thought that they would be able to break the ground and put some gravel in, and compact the gravel, which would give them a usable extra-wide turn area.
Okay, so they still intend to do it in the near future?
As soon as they can pour the concrete. But, yeah, I think they're going to start, if they get a little bit of warm weather between now and January or Feb, you know what I mean, they'll be able to at least do the wider turn radius and pack down some gravel.
Okay.
But not do concrete right away, because it can't be done.
And just for the audience's benefit, this will allow, we've got it in our board packet, but it will allow buses to essentially queue up, allow more room for them to queue up. Because Orange is, I think it has, well, I'm sure per capita, but it may be of all our schools, period, has the most buses.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was actually, that bus turnaround radius was actually designed for Highland, which was designed for a back road coming into the site. We thought by now, we might be farther ahead with the residential development out there. And we thought there might be a back road coming in already. So, we went with that design. As it turns out, it's going to be a while yet. And so, this will allow either us to continue, we're going to assess it in the spring as well, this will allow us to continue using the present double-directional driveway, or if we want, we can put in a driveway a little bit to the north of the present one, and then the cars won't be merged with the current cars and the buses.
And the other thing this does is, right now, even utilizing the north entrance there, ten buses is a max that can, and there are ten buses, that will fit inside that gate. And with the extra classrooms and not knowing whether or not they'll be filled, but if they are, it's probably going to be at least thirteen. There could very well be thirteen buses. So, this will permit the number of buses to match the school capacity if the other ones are used. So, that's the other issue here.
Well, and I thought, too, when I was out there the other day, that the safety factor of getting the kids not to have to cross in front of the bus...
Off on that same side.
Was really important, too. And I think that's great that we're addressing that, too, so they're safer in getting off right to the building.
Exactly. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. Motion carried. Then finally, that takes us to Exhibit A on page twenty-four.
I move the Board of Education approve the assurance statement to the SBRC as presented.
Moved and a seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. And discussion?
My question is here is, first of all, this is for the fiscal year. So, it ends June thirtieth, and the report is due September sixteenth. Correct? Okay. By this monthly down here, where did I see that? Somewhere we're going to file, I thought there was a plan to keep track of this monthly. In B, okay. Are we, do we get information, particularly from Durham, in a timely enough manner to really do that? Or is there going to be a change? Or what's the plan?
We're in process of discussion with them right now because of, we just received this week the bill for October. But I believe with a discussion of the need to deal with these issues, I know Special Ed has been talking to them recently as well, as far as documenting that mileage under an acceptable plan by the state. I think once we get all those parameters agreed upon, then the information will be more timely.
So, this will also allow us to have sufficient records to claim the Medicare reimbursement?
Part of that was a requirement for them to give Special Ed that mileage to do the Medicare reimbursement routes. But they were, you know, with Kathy being her first year and understanding what that report required, that was part of the learning curve.
Okay. The issue is, if we document, we can get Medicare reimbursement for a portion of the transportation.
Yes.
And the other is if we, you know, yeah, the better our records are, the better...
Absolutely. Well, and we can see monthly, we can track it on a monthly basis and make better decisions.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the last action item on our agenda, which is a, kind of a bittersweet one to deal with, because we're very happy for Dr. Norris, who announced on Thursday his retirement. But I think also... who announced on Thursday his retirement, but I think also, we will be sad to not have you here.
You're just gonna miss the puns, Mike. That's all you're gonna miss.
Keep keeping our meeting, keeping us on our toes during our meetings all the time with your puns. But we still have six and a half months to half his puns, so.
I'll do my best.
But again, on Thursday, Dr. Norris announced his retirement. He has been superintendent here, will be for six years, and has done an outstanding job during those six years. We discussed it on Thursday, but Dr. Norris, I think you've always kept students in mind and made decisions with the best interest of students in mind. And we've had a lot going on the last five and a half years, but I think the highest compliment I can pay is that the district will be better off for having you here. And that's, that really says it all. We'll go through and have a chance to talk as well. First, let's get the motion on the table, and then if board members wanna speak, and Dr. Norris, if you wanna speak, we can. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the retirement of Superintendent Dr. Gary Norris effective June thirtieth, twenty fourteen, or June twentieth, June thirtieth.
Well, it should be thirtieth.
Yes, yes.
I'll try to sneak that one.
Darn!
Well, no, the other way around. Yeah, yeah. No, we still need you, yes. Okay, we'll get that motion on the table.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. And I don't know, Dr. Norris, if you would like to say something. I know the other board members, those who wish to may like to speak as well.
Well, you know, like you said, Mike, we, we had quite a time to comment the other day, and so I don't wanna draw this out, except to thank the staff members, because it was them that did the work ultimately. It was them that we've, in many cases, pushed right up to the edge. And our staff here in the Waterloo Schools are some of the finest I've ever worked with. And they kept kids in mind at all times, and I will never, you know, I'll never forget that. I used, in my letter, I used two terms that are used, thrown around kind of lightly, dedication and hard work. But I just want you all to know, and of course, it's, all of this is on behalf of young people, but I wanna tell you that the staff really came through, the principals, the teachers, the other support staff have done an outstanding job. They had a lot thrown at them. We had a long ways to go. I hope at some point, they'll be able to look back and say that we set the stage, set the foundation for a really high-performing school system. So, I hope if there is a remembrance of all the last five or six years, people will eventually say, hey, we put things in place that it's gonna help kids for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And are there any board members that wish to speak? Say a couple of words.
Gary, I'll start.
Start with Chandler.
I just wanna, I do wanna reiterate what has been said already about being good for kids, but I remember you had a tagline, and I think Dr. Barney's used one similarly, about, you know, what have you done for kids today, or is this good for kids? And I've heard you say that time and time again in meetings, and I truly believe that that's one thing that you've taught me, is that, is this an adult issue, or is this an issue with kids? And I think that's something to really be proud of. And then secondly, on that same vein, I just wanna say, and being proud of you, that whenever we've been at conventions or whenever you speak in the greater Cedar Valley, I've always been so proud that you are our superintendent. I think you just do a wonderful job. And so, those are my two little kudos. Many more to come.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And Sue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see some of Sue's notes, and so I thought I better jump in before she upstages me. It's like I'm peeking at her notes. I'm like, I haven't had much time to work with you as a board member, and I can tell that from being on the high school task force, I can see that the passion that you have for moving our kids forward, and always thinking about what's next, and thinking about where they're going to be, and how are they gonna be able to contribute to the society. And being on the high school task force and having you being able to, not, it's not just your idea, being open to other people's ideas as a community member, that was always valuable to me. And I think that I can invite it to the high school task force, because I disagreed with you on something, which was always something that was very, like, I was like, oh, he wants to hear, you know, the voice of everyone. So, I appreciate that, and I have.
I was intimidated.
No, I'm kidding.
Just kidding.
My dad said that's why I don't have a husband. But I would, as a board member, too, as a new board member, I would say that that has still been my experience, and it makes me excited to be a part of this board and saddened a little bit not to have the opportunity to work more with you.
Thank you very much.
Now you can.
Thank you.
I got my eighth page. No, I'm just kidding. But, no, I've had the privilege of working with you five of the six years. And just when I came on the board, everyone said, oh, he was kinda brought in as a change agent. And so, I just kinda today looked up what a change agent was, and someone who knows and understands the dynamics that facilitate or hinder change. And change agents define research, plan, building, support, and they partner to create change. And I just kinda thought, you're not always popular, because you have to make hard decisions. And you did that, and you charged our staff with, to the edge, as you said. And I just really appreciate that. I've learned through you that the superintendent has to have very thick skin. And you behave, behave in a professional manner through that, and I appreciate that when you can be called names and your integrity is questioned, and you have held high to that professional standard. And I just was going through, Nelson Mandela was a really positive person in my life, and one of his favorite quotes was, "Everyone can rise above their circumstances and achieve success if they are dedicated and passionate about what they do." And so, I just wanted to thank you for your dedication and passion for the kids and the people in this district.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And Andrea.
Well, Gary, when you came, I think you told us, you had this vision for the Waterloo Schools, that we could be better than we were, that we could do better for our students. And with all your initiatives that you brought with us, brought to us, we are doing that. We have more to do. But thank you for that. We needed somebody with a vision.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Andrea. And Mike Kinsey?
Well, I was a board member during our last search, and I visited Dr. Norris in Sarasota, Florida. And I was struck by his staff and the way they spoke of him at the time. And it said a lot about him as a person, and it kinda brought that forward. We were a little concerned about the stack of papers that you gave us at the interview process. You definitely gave us all of your previous work. So, that was, that was good. I was impressed by your energy and your devotion. And you carried over this work into our district. I believe our district is in a better place because of that, raising achievement, having more engaged staff and students, and a bright and promising future set in place for the next superintendent. So, and with that, I wish you a happy and healthy retirement.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Lyle Smith?
Yeah, there's three things that kinda stick out in my mind. One is the overarching philosophy that, you know, public schools, Waterloo Schools in particular, exist first and foremost for the benefit of kids. And yes, for adults too, because, you know, everybody has to have a good work environment to do their best, but first and foremost, for kids. You know, we've all heard, is that good for kids? You know? And so, that's one. Number two is technology, and I'll spend on that just a little bit, the application of technology. And three is the Twenty-First Century Task Force. I think that's also gonna end up being a really important thing. But on the technology, you know, it started with, aligned the goals for the most part. First, the Promethean boards, and we ended up with a comprehensive availability of a Promethean board in every classroom. So, you know, regardless of the drama, we ended up where we needed to be. And then, two, on the safety side, the whole implementation of Raptor, again, application of technology for the benefit of kids, integration of the Waterloo Schools and the city IT departments. To me, that was an important step, you know, again, visionary in the sense of local agencies should be able to share and cooperate. Then infinite campus, the student records helps the involvement of parents, it's their interface with the schools. And it continues to evolve. Just last week, I think, we added texting capabilities for the parents. So, that continues to support the goals. And then lastly, the bus safety improvement project. This is, again, visionary, more creative than organizations like this are accustomed to. But still, perhaps an example of innovation and creativity that can exist within the schools as they try to teach. Innovation and creativity. So, it could be an internal example as it ends up. So, I think particularly strong is the vision and the leadership to apply technology to a school district for the benefit of the kids.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, Dr. Norris, I'm struck by sitting here tonight, listening to all these things, and from everybody, the talking about your, your work and the effects of your work here, the positive effects on the Waterloo School District. But also, just listening, Lyle, to your comments at the end, like talking about the IT department. There's another thing. There's been an awful lot of good changes made over the last five and a half years. And there will be, there is still work to be done and work ahead. Now, to switch gears a little bit, just for the benefit of the audience, in talking about process, again, Dr. Norris, we're extremely grateful to you for the way you've handled this and allowed us time to go through that process, because again, this is, this is retirement effective of June thirtieth of next year, so it's about six and a half months away. What we've been doing as a board and with the superintendent team is having annual reviews that we've always had in, in June, but also meeting in, sometimes around the Christmas holiday, basically. We've, last two years have been in December. And this year, and a lot of times, that gets to be kind of a goal-setting time as well, or talking about kind of where things are and where we're going. And so, we'll still have that, I don't know if we call it a mid-year review or not, but it's kinda that goal session, probably in early January of this year for the public with Dr. Norris. Tonight is on the agenda, and as it should be, is the retirement of Dr. Norris. So, what we don't wanna do is just move ahead too quickly, but we do have to move ahead.
Otherwise, I can't retire, so move ahead.
So, what we'll do tomorrow, we've got a special meeting set for tomorrow, and it's at three-thirty in the afternoon, and it is an open session. It's open to the public. And it's a special board meeting to discuss the process now moving forward. And that will include talking about, really, when it comes to a replacement, what the search, just generally what the search options are. And then importantly, to start the discussion amongst the board of what qualities and characteristics we're looking for in our next superintendent, where our school district is right now, what we think the needs of our school district are right now, and what we think they will be in the future. And then we can also talk about a process for gathering input from the public, because tomorrow will just be kind of the start of it with the seven school members to talk about that. But also, we need to talk about ways to gather input from the public, from the community at large, from within the district as well. And then we'll discuss what the options are for an internal search, and also then discuss what the options would be for an external search, and the considerations that go with that as well. So, again, that'll all be tomorrow at three-thirty. As we go through this process, we'll do our best to be as open as possible. It's not a process where you can avoid having closed sessions. I'm sure at some point we will, but whenever we have closed sessions, we'll be available before and after to talk about that as much as we can. And we do, as a board, want to gather as much information as possible. And so, we'll all be available, I think, as board members. This is kind of what we signed up for. So, we'll, the seven of us will be busy here going forward, but we'll work very hard and try to do the best thing for the school district going forward. But again, all that is with gratitude to Dr. Norris for getting us to this place and allowing us to go through this process and go through it in a timely, a reasoned manner.
If I could say one thing that I said Thursday and would like to repeat for the people that couldn't make it Thursday, but the superintendent is merely the extension of the board. You all set the policies. Working with staff and with other administrators, we set our strategic plan. So, none of this has been, you know, yeah, maybe a couple of the ideas, Gary Norris, just 'cause I'd stolen from somewhere else. But this board has been a stalwart board in that you were willing to, you were willing to also support me through some of the tough times. We told you early on that there were gonna be tough times whenever you're making such monumental changes. And it's hard to always remember that when, you know, someone's got your ear. And, but you guys have, it's really, if we've made any progress at all, it's to huge extent the credit of the staff who's done the work, but also you all that, when people were chewing at you, you withstood the challenge. And so, please know that. And please also know that the highest tribute that a superintendent can be paid is that just some of the work goes on. And I do think a lot of the work has, blanking on the word I wanna use, congealed, or a lot of the work has solidified so that it will go on. Some of the things we're talking about are just behaviors of people, and how is it you daily go about, what are their daily responsibilities of an educational professional? And so, you all have to know that you played a huge role in supporting your superintendent. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And again, we've talked a little bit about Dr. Norris, but also the process going forward, which we'll really get into in earnest tomorrow. But I don't know if there's anything else board members would like to say. Okay.
We do have a long list that you need to get completed.
I know.
Well, you will.
We are, seriously, we do wanna be transparent about that and let the administrators and the teachers know that this isn't going to be a six-month pause button.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, we're gonna, we'll be transparent about that list.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why we're, we'll get started really tomorrow. Yes, yes. We'll be, we'll be moving ahead. If there's nothing further, anybody, yeah, if there's nothing further, then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you again, Dr. Norris. That concludes our action items on our agenda. And so, now it's time to turn it back over to Dr. Norris for the superintendent's report.
Well, thanks. Thanks again very much for all the kind words. And better yet, I felt like you genuinely meant them, and that's even more rewarding. So, thank you. We finished up the community meetings last week, the series of evening community meetings, although we did some civic group presentations. They're gonna continue throughout December and January. I know we had Exchange Club today. I presented to a group of regional junior achievement board members, actually corporate execs, on Friday. And so, some of the things still coming up are staff meetings. We're meeting all of the admin. We're meeting, all of the administrators are taking turns, meeting with different staff members. I've got some corporate meetings in January with some of the corporate execs in the area. Linda Allen and Steve Duston, I'll be doing some corporate meetings with the heads of some of the bigger corporations. We just, it really is something that's beginning to resonate in the community. And so, I think, I appreciate all of you guys being at the meetings. Some of them were better attended than others, but I really appreciate you being there. The only other thing I would say is what a great event last Thursday out at Orange Elementary with the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, having a welcome session out there. Good morning, Cedar Valley. It was just well-attended and it's proud to show off our new facility, so.
Yes. It was a great event. Thank you, Dr. Norris. And information from board members. And I'll start with Lyle Schmidt.
Just congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Gillen. You know, extracurricular activities are so important and touch so many students that might not otherwise be involved. And I was going to particularly note, it really, for those responsible for those extracurricular activities, it does affect family schedules. They're impacted, so there's special appreciation for that. And lastly, just Merry Christmas. And I hope, as an organization, we're not bullied by the ACLU or the Freedom from Religious or anybody else to say, to fear, like what happened, you know, a few years ago, kind of an unfortunate incident. And, you know, it is a federal holiday called Christmas, been that way for 150 years, and we should not be shy to say Merry Christmas, especially this year with Hanukkah already over. So the holidays is really holiday Christmas. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. And thanks, Lyle. Mike Kinsey.
Just a quick comment about our athletic meetings that we've had lately. Students and, I think, staff can be looking for maybe a form to questionnaire that'll be going around to answer some questions that the administration has about where our athletics are in the schools and where they can go in the future. And we hope to get good participation in that and get some, bring those answers back to the committee and move forward with our athletics in the future. With that, I have to get to Eastside.
Yes.
Better go.
Other thing going on.
I gotta go.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And Andrea Sparks.
Well, I'm happy to be back here. It's hard to see everybody's smiling faces on the telephone, so I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you back. Glad you're mobiling. Just don't slip on the slippery sidewalk.
I have my escort for that, so.
We don't have liability insurance, so we can't.
That's it, okay. Thank you, Andrea. Sorry, got a lot of stuff going on. Thank you. And welcome back. We're glad to have you back. We were, it was, it brightened up everybody when you walked in today. So, David, thank you for bringing her over as well.
Jesus, weren't you smiling?
No, we thought you might, we thought you might have the roller, but that's, you're doing really well. No, no, this is great. We were proud of you. I know it's been a lot of work.
So now, I would have said it sparked up our meeting, but you, never mind, never mind.
Six and a half more months.
We're going to get quite a few.
Keep us livened up.
We're going to get more of those, I'm afraid.
Yes, exactly. And now, Shannon McNally.
Nothing.
And Sue Flynn.
And I just wanted to encourage internal staff to, at this point, if you have suggestions, ideas, just your thoughts, I've been approached by a few people already about the superintendent search and what your ideas are. We really value the people, our staff members, the people that are in the trenches. So you can email us on our websites, we all have district websites, you know, and we really value your input and we'd like to hear from you regarding the search. And just to let you know that we are going to have Dr. Norris working very hard, truly, the next seven months. So if anyone has concern for that and also Lyle's sentiment, Merry Christmas and everyone have a safe break. And kids, get your books out and read a little bit.
Yes. Thank you, Sue. And Angela Weekly.
I'm just going to piggyback on the get your books out and read a little bit. My goddaughter just told me that they don't have finals till they come back after the holiday break. I am going to go with holiday. After the holiday break, and so, don't forget to take your books home because the buildings will be closed. So make sure that you take that stuff.
Right, Sue?
And your instruments.
We had, we had, Sue could tell the story, but was it a year ago or two years ago?
A year ago.
A year ago, a storm set in, as it turns out, on the days what we were to come back. And so, there was a lot of young people needing a lot of books and a lot of horns.
Yes. So we worked it out.
We worked it out.
Santa might bring snow.
That's right. Angela, thank you. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Our next regular school board meeting in two weeks, it falls on December 23rd, just right before Christmas and Christmas Eve, so all district buildings will be closed. So that meeting's canceled. So our next regular school board meeting is not until January 13th. And that'll be at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. But again, we have a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 3:30. It's here in the Education Service Center, just in room 110, which is just over across the hall. And that'll, again, begin at 3:30. If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.